Good evening. Welcome to this work session we have, just to let everybody know on room call. The mayor is excused, otherwise everybody's here. I'll lead us in the pledge and then Councilman Tendazola will say that.
I pledge allegiance to those like the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God and indivisible, with every justice for all.
Lord God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day which you have bestowed upon us, Lord. We ask you to please graciously hear us as we meet in this work session. And we have a great session and that we represent the city of Safford, our employees, our department heads, our manager, and everyone involved here in the, in this important meeting tonight, we ask to Christ our Lord, amen.
Thank you. If we have any, any comments? No, either one. Okay, then we'll move on to item number, number seven, which is the 2023 dash 2024 revenue and fund balance projections. And it's up for discussion.
So I just wanted to open with a few words. I'll be brief. It, it, as Mike said, actually, this is a really important meeting tonight. Some of the subject matter, we've been over multiple times. And we've done that on purpose because we want to make sure that we're being as clear as we can be and we're generating understanding on these subjects. So two important issues will be covered tonight. Revenue and fund balances, what we're going to open with, and the reason we're opening with that is because that will set the stage for the things that will come later, really the entire budget, but some of the capital projects and also our discussion tonight on compensation. I've talked with pretty much all of you on the phone and had some good questions and I appreciate that. I'm trying to make sure I can answer some of those questions before we get here. Fun balance information will basically discuss essentially one-time money. Those monies are generally used to do. We will discuss some of those projects and we have recommendations and they are that, their recommendations. The ongoing revenue picture will be used for ongoing and really tonight, our main focus is compensation. That piece of the budget, we've talked about a lot of fundamentals, O and M. Add it in, Rob, go over that again. So essentially. Capital. Once we get done tonight, really, what we're looking for tonight is. Session. And so we're looking to get some direction so that as we lead into the month of April, the 10th and the 24th, Ma will make some decisions on the items we're discussing tonight, including some, we won't get into the detail we have in the past, which would be CIP. Tonight, we will do the comp plan, we'll talk about that, health insurance, salary survey, HSA. So again, we're going to turn some direction from council tonight. And also talk. Some time to the fund balance that with the parks, it's right up that we put in there. So that said, as we get into April, hopefully we wrap everything up. The tentative final budget, so eight is tentative, May 22nd will be final. So. Important meeting. We've been talking about stuff, including compensation and some of the capital parts for quite a while. And to my mind, these are going to be some of the most critical decisions you make because I think potentially it will be taking the city in a direction, a different direction, a newer direction. So hopefully you'll find the information useful. So with that, I will turn it over to Rob.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, Member of the Council. I'm extremely excited to be here tonight to explain where you're at financially in regards to fund balances by fund. Those are ongoing revenue projections, especially into fiscal 20. Strong. Your fund balances across the board are, you've met all the goals that you've set for yourself, which is that 50% of the prior year's operating expense plus the next year's debt service. You have more on top of that, which allows you a decision. Do we do something with it or do we not? Additionally, on the ongoing remedies, those are also coming in very strong to the point where they're coming in much higher than your ongoing expenditures. And we'll get into some of those details later. Again, providing you with information that allows you to make a decision whether spend those dollars on a particular item that the staff may be recommending or something else that this council may chase to do, not spend it, put it to fund balance, whatever that decision might be. So we, at the end of the day, we are seeking some guidance from the council direction so we can bring that back in a package in a proposed city manager's budget in totality. So that way it would include everything we've discussed to date, all those items that we've discussed in the two departments. The two separate CIP conversations as well as some refinement that the staff is going through right now. On, is there something that needs to be carried over because of supply chain issues? Is there a change to an estimate based upon a bid that we maybe have received? So at the end of the day, we will highlight all those changes that are different than what you've seen to date. When we ultimately bring that city manager's proposed budget forward. So to get started, if it would move for me, I moved. There it goes. A little delay. Staff leveraged a number of sources as we come up with our revenue estimation. So this is according to Rob, not the world according to John or Matthew or anybody else in the organization. This is taking information from those leaders in the community, those economics, economists in the community as well as nationally to help us understand where we're going. So we leverage the data sources that you see here, anywhere from federal data all the way down to our local data that we have in-house, whether it be customer-based data, building permit data and the like. So we leverage all of that in order to help make a decision on whether to forecast, meaning it's something that the Bureau of Labor Statistics or the Eller School is saying, here's where we believe the numbers to be or growth pattern might, might look like versus something a little bit more empirical, meaning the League of Arizona Cities and Towns works with the Departments of Revenue and, and Transportation to help refine our state shared revenue numbers citywide for statewide. And that way, they don't, DOR and ADOT don't have to pick up the phone from 91 different jurisdictions. They just have to pick up the phone once and then they provide that data to us. So really the data we're getting on state shared revenues as it stands now is fairly clean. So it's not a projection of a, you know, what level of confidence, a high level of confidence on that data. What you will see moving forward, however, is that our revenues, as we created those, don't include anything modeled for any proposed legislation. So if there's something out there right now that has not passed, it's not included in here as far as the model. Now, we did have two revenue items that looked a bit scary to the organization at this point. One of them, the governor did veto, that is, the, the food on, for food for home consumption, local sales tax that was vetoed by the governor. So that is not impacting our budget here. There really is an outstanding one relative to corporate income tax that has passed one chamber, it's awaiting the other. And again, we haven't modeled it here, we have modeled the impact, but until it's signed, we're not going to apply that impact statement into the proposed budget. So if that does happen, we will, we will quickly pivot, come back to you and tell you what that looks like. What we're hearing on that corporate income taxes, it might be woven into the budget negotiations between the governor and, and the majority of the House and Senate. In total, in their general fund, your local sales tax revenues are running strong. I'll show you a chart here momentarily and that is your largest revenue source for the general fund. So it's always important, you know, for those community members and for us to always remember shopping local is important. Why those dollars come back to us? Say, well, where should I go? Well, if you really need something from a large box store, right across. Stay at home, border. Pretty higher. There's an anomaly there in regards to that what's called urban revenue share, that's really component of state shared revenues. So in the state legislature, they did pass a bill on the end of the joint income tax rate. You know, all good for. And what the League of Arizona Cities and Towns did is they negotiated a bump up on that share percentage. Went from 15 to 18. So sometimes a, a bigger percent of a smaller number is not. Allowed that, that three basis points to float for two years on prior year's collection of data. So we always get our state, our income tax two years in arrears. So we're not making a larger share on collections even two years ago. So for the next. We got more money, we're, we're calling that one time and you'll see that through. Ongoing. We're not linking that to any ongoing expenditure stream, we're pulling that out aside. So good news, however, is that, you know, local sales tax as well as state shared sales tax are, are running higher. Another large component of the budget is part of our HERF indoor streets fund. What we're seeing there is obviously if our local tax. And we're distributing a half cent sales tax to the streets fund is higher. So that is going, that is going higher, that's going strong, good news. The unfortunate news is that we've seen a little bit of a decline and a declining forecast A dot relative to both vehicle license tax as well as HERF, which that highway user revenue fund is really the gasoline tax component of, of the money we get from the state. So they're seeing both of those go down a bit. Some of it is economic driven. So think about how many new cars even the city has bought in the last couple of years. Lance, how many? Probably not many. That's how the vehicle license tax level gets set on that first, maybe that, that, that retail price at the very beginning of the life of that vehicle. It doesn't matter if it was resold as a used car sometime later, that, that VLT rate doesn't get reset. It starts to decline over time. So we're kind of seeing a problem of COVID where things weren't on the street to be sold at a lot. It's now catching up with us. Luckily, that's not a large dollar value for us. It's still significant, but it, it, it's a hit we can take. Similarly, they're seeing the share of gasoline taxes going down as well. Part of that is, is because the state is growing, right? But unfortunately for Safford, you're not. So our relative share to that is starting to go down because it's based on population. So as much, even if they're getting more in gasoline tax, our share of that starts to decline because of based on population. And finally, the kind of the big bucket that I'll call in our enterprise funds. We are seeing consistent revenue from year over year based upon our, our, our customer set, that, that, that's going good. What we are projecting moving forward, however, are some commodity price increases, obviously for the PPA and, and electric as well as the commodity and state stabilization rates within the gas. Basically, what this is doing is paying back the fund for us digging into our pocket over the last year, paying those exorbitant natural, natural gas prices. So we are projecting that moving forward and we'll, we'll show that in a moment. So first of all, when we start looking at our fund balances by fund, just to kind of level set on what is a fund balance, after it loads in front of all of you, since it's loaded in front of me. The fund balance is in essence, what is remaining year over year, where your revenues have come in higher than your expenditures year over year. And let's see if it wants to load. So if, if, not to, not to be preachy on fund balance, but the definition is basically that money that you're, you're putting it into a savings account, your, your revenues are stronger than your expenditures. In some cases, that, that is intentional. Specifically, and when you think about HERF or streets. Receive it. Why? Because we're banking over time to do a consequential street project. We don't have enough money to do a, a 20th Avenue every year. We don't have enough money to do a 14th Avenue extension per year. We have to bank it. And maybe get some grants and then spend it. In the case of the general fund that's been growing over time, you can see there it's, it's, it's been growing because of a, the leadership of the, of the council and of good stewards by the staff by making sure we're hitting your fund balance objectives.
You said all our fund balances were, were there. I, I thought it'd be a while before the landfill got there.
So, Mayor, Members of the Council, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council. So your landfill is actually very strong position, look at it relative to cash in pocket. There's an accounting maneuver, however, that needs to happen to account for your, your future closing cost. Right? Which is going to have, happen, you know, a decade or two away. That all needs to be booked in that, in, in our year right now. So if your little balance is upside down because of that liability that's sitting there on your balance sheet. But it doesn't mean you didn't have money in your pocket, the landfill. And enterprise, it's just when you have that future liability of closure, we need to start building that up. And year over year, it has been, we've been shipping.
That's sanitation too, because I always mix the sanitation and landfill. So one of them I thought was. Started one three years ago, so it's, it's there and held.
Right, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, so it is. Is very tight after you look at your budget table. So you've met your reserve across the board. Landfill is the only one that's negative and mainly because of that multimillion dollars of closure costs that's sitting there, that future liability that's, that's. But to walk you through this chart, it was in the packet, but just to walk you through that general fund is that second column. And just starting from the top, this is starting with an audited figure on each of those funds. So in essence, the general fund is starting the fiscal 23. So it started this fiscal year with a 17.1 million dollar fund balance. All good news. What we are anticipating to change into fiscal 23 is we anticipate spending, adding another one million to that. So how did we find a million dollars? Revenues are coming in higher, which we'll show you in a moment, as well as we're not spending all of capital. We're not spending all of our, all of our operating expenses. So that's adding another million by the end of June of this year, we anticipate. So to get you started for fiscal 24, we say, what's our starting position by fund? And so in the general fund, 18.2, HERF right around five, and then all enterprises about 87 million. Now, that doesn't mean all of those can be spent. The council has, has directed staff as far as a budget stabilization reserve or a reserve requirement of those funds by fund. So in the general fund and all others, we want 50% of prior year operating expenses plus debt service for the following. So in the context for the general fund, 6.5 million, we're setting aside, not touching. That's a reserve requirement this council has set. And you can see the reserves moving forward on the other two funds. There are, there are other elements from a, either contractual requirement or from a accounting perspective to where your fund balance may not be spendable or it's not available. In the context of the general fund, there's a $500,000 requirement for our PSPRS bond. Right? That was an ordinance that the council passed to basically tell bondholders, we're setting that aside no matter what. And so that's contractual, we're holding on to that. As well as those others, some non-spendable amounts, especially as you start going over to enterprise and you see a big number of 64 million, we can't spend it. Why? Because the wastewater treatment plant's got a lot of money in their capital assets. The street has a lot of money in their capital assets. That's still part of your fund balance, but it's not, it's not in a spendable form. It's not in cash or receivable, but it's still showing that you have that value as far as in your, in your fund. In, in the case of the general fund, if we were to look about three quarters of the way down, what's your available fund balance? And what I mean by available, all of it is available to the council. But based on prior decision of council to set aside certain elements and some contractual, we're saying that you have available just under $11 million to spend in fiscal 24, should the council so choose. We've already come to you over two meetings of our capital improvement program. And for the general fund, we've identified 4.5 roughly million in capital, capital plans for fiscal 24 only. So this is not taking into account the full five-year plan, but just what we need for fiscal 24 and what would be allocated in that year. Here's where we're pulling back in one-time revenues, as I indicated, state shared revenue, especially in income tax is an anomaly based on, we're going to have two higher years and it's going to fall. And so we did not want to model these revenues of the 1.25 as being ongoing. We wanted to show it going to the fund balance and to be used for one-time expense, not for ongoing expense. So after allocating dollars from the general fund to our CIP as well as all the other funds, we have a net positive position, fund balance position on all funds across the board. So for the general fund, about some four, and you can read from left to right on each of those respective funds. So that provides the city, provides the council an opportunity to perhaps make additional investments if, if you so choose by use of the fund balance dollars. Staff has come forward today with some suggested uses of those funds moving forward. And first and foremost, we would be looking at.
Faster computer systems.
That would be one. Anyway, so when the chart does finally load, you will see that of that seven some odd million dollars that's there. Here it comes. So there's about $7.4 million with the number that I'm taking from the general fund from the prior slide. And across the board, so this top line that you see there by fund is the bottom range from the prior slide, meaning what's available. So now it says, William, what should we do or what is staff's recommendation or suggested uses of those funds? And staff is recommending that by the end of this fiscal year, we do make a payment to the public safety personnel retirement system in the tune of $600,000 to basically get us back to where we thought what was going to happen when the bond was and the payment was to be made to PSPRS. If you recall, the council did direct staff go forth, go out on the, on the street, get 13.1 million dollars and make that payment to PSPRS. By the time it got to the street and our bond council and bond staff, they went with only the 12.6 or 12.5, excuse me. So the payment that was made to PSPRS last year was only 12.5, not 13.1. Given the strength of your, we're recommending to do that by end of fiscal year. And why we're recommending by end of fiscal year, because the PSPRS actuary study as well as their audit. To get there, so that way that you'll have a better position on what is, what am I now dealing with market volatility, not what I thought it was going to be at if a full 13.1 was suspended. So we would recommend that.
600,000 because that's because I drug my feet, didn't get it going soon enough. So that's 600,000, but then they're always projecting 7% that they make. What, what gap to handle on that this time?
So, Vice Mayor, so when they're looking at that, they're using, look, a five-year average on what their, what their rate of returns. And if you looked at your own, at your own perhaps investment pool, it did not do so well in, in fiscal, you know, or even in calendar 22. So that's where they'll reset that assessment and that, that assumption. Is, is that a point in time? What is the membership for the city of Safford Police Department as of 6:30? What were the rate of returns as of 6:30? Who are the members that are receiving benefits as of 6:30? Who had a hot sense and now as of 6:30, are there any vacancies? Everything's a point in time. As things change, that next day on July 1, things start changing. So it's based on an actual review and what happened at that point in time.
Well, there, there's a lump sum we're going to need to come up with to pay that gap.
It was $900,000 in addition to the six. So the 900,000 was basically market performance plus whatever personnel changes that we made. The six is really a result of the bond council saying, in the past, when they funded these bonds, they funded them in full. So let's take Flagstaff as an example. When they funded, they funded the smoothing portion as well, the averaging, which then now they ended up with a higher amount. They overfunded the pool, basically. So bond council funded, didn't fund the smoothing, they only funded 12.5 in set assets. So that 600,000 came from, and then the other nine was the market performance. We want to keep an eye on, but we don't want to chase because just as much as it went down, it can come back up. And I think we're funded like 2048. So again, you want to keep an eye on that gap over time, but one assumes that the market will rebound. So for example, even sitting in on the fire pension board, you saw the returns were negative. So we actually, the timing was just off for us in terms of the market because the market didn't perform and therefore you had that negative return. It's anticipated it will come back around at some point as well, so we'll just keep an eye on.
Other suggested uses from staff's perspective is to at least budget for what we would contemplate a budgetary estimate for the Park at Eighth and Discovery. So we did get from the design consultant, that was the budgetary estimate, all in, what would it look like as of today? Obviously, the level of confidence of the, might be somewhere in a, you know, 70 or 80 percentile range. It's not a design estimate, it's a budgetary one. We would recommend at least doing that allocation within the budget, the set aside of the 3.546, and that's, that's a very specific number. 546,000 of that is the remaining CARES Act money. So it's actually utilizing those dollars that were received in that first tranche of, of COVID relief funding.
That 3 million, excuse me, that's a complete jump on, on that eighth. 3 million, right? That is just finishing that whole project, right?
Right. So Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, that would take, we would add this to the existing budget, which were the ARPA allocation funding. So this would take that, that entire project budget to approximately $7 million inclusive of what would be necessary in regards to sewer line changes, as you see that allocation of $800,000 into the enterprise for that purpose, as well as utilize the remaining CARES as well as the current allocation that the council had provided of ARPA funds into that project. Again, I think the, the set aside originally, as I understand of those ARPA dollars, was to say, let's dedicate it to parks, parks and recreation. We know we want to park in that location, but we don't know how much it's going to cost. What staff is desiring to do is to at least identify budgetarily what that project would cost. I would also look for other sources of funding, whether it be granting opportunities, donations or, or other funds that we would find eligible for use at this park.
Which we are having conversations right now with United Way. I got contacted by them. They want us to make application for a grant through them to help support the park as well. So if, we don't have any solid numbers yet, probably around 200,000 or so that you could get from United Way to help support the, the park as well, which isn't in here.
Additionally, based on direction of the council previously on if there's money, where should we spend it, recreation and the like? We heard you during conversations of. Meetings, specifically El Paso, we're looking to leverage 700,000 of that instead of trying to do that in-house. Leverage and. Just to get that, that asset done for the community, spend the dollars that we have. Give me the asset. Finally, the last one we have here. Dollars in the, in the fund. My, my part. I've been doing this room relative to use of your current financial system and payroll data. It's time to move forward. It's time really to move this organization forward to provide a better way in which to manage the resources. There's a lot that's happening outside the system just because the system can't, can't do it. A lot of spreadsheets and there's a better way to be much more efficient, much more effective in managing your resources moving forward. So we are recommending that we look at a project split across all funds to replace your financial system in that regard.
And so just as a follow-up on this, what's critical really from the council perspective? So let's take something simple like El Paso. We had experiences in the past with lots here, we know how long it takes to try to do that in-house because of the staffing levels. So really, you have a choice, you have a choice between trying to do it in-house, right? Which takes longer or spend the money on it to get it done quicker. This is spend the money on it to get it done quicker, right? And, and it's harder to hire staff because you don't know what level of capital activity you're going to have. So in a lot of ways, it makes sense, if you have the funding available, it makes sense to contract it out where possible and move it along more quickly by contracting it out. So in the case of El Paso, it's pretty straightforward. In the case of Discovery, it's the same concept again, it's a suggestion. The 546 would be added to the 2.4, which gives you to about 3 million of other people's money, if you will, right? Between CARES and ARPA, you got $3 million out of the gate, which leaves a balance of three. If you take 800,000 out of here for the sewer line, you're at 2.2. So again, if you went all in to do the park at seven, you would be coming out of pocket an additional 2.2 million roughly. And again, that's an estimate. As we sit down and go over with the Parks and Rec Committee, what those amenities are, at what level you want to pursue them, you'll end up deciding on whatever level of expenditure you want. But the 2.4 plus the five is really going to be insufficient to build the park out in any complete way. It may not require us to do seven, but it's going to be something between the seven as a higher end estimate and the three as a lower end. And again, remember, most of what we've been dealing with so far, everything's coming in at two and three times the price. So again, this gives you a range to work with as you sit down, you go over those amenities and you figure out at what level you'd want to fund them.
And this is a side when some of the sewer we're talking about at Eighth Avenue Park, we're looking to put it in to be enhanced for development. We're looking to put it in to be enhanced for development of the property west of the park.
I think south, right? It's south. Yeah.
South and west.
Yeah. So basically we would upsize what I think was an eight inch to a 12 inch.
12 right now at 26th. We would, we would bring that 12 up, up Eighth Avenue to the park. Keep it, actually if we had to go up and cross the wall and go south. That's the idea. We talked to the designer.
But that's part of, and it's in, that's part of the design.
That's, that's the 800,000 that we would.
It's in this.
Would pay for the sewer line design and extension.
Okay. So that's, that's an add.
It's included. It would be included, right? In this number? It's in there? Yeah, it's in this number already.
That's a plus for our designing going forward.
Yes.
Yes. So at the end of the day, we have, there's pretty much two decisions. One, what do we budget? And that's merely get it in the budget so we can put something on the street when it ultimately comes time for, uh, letting a, a bid. And then ultimately, what's the award? And that comes back to council for your, your action. Um, there are many different ways to put that bit out. There are different options and then it could be decided. Uh, we want base level park with options C and D and not A and B. And then you could, at that point, after working with the Parks and Rec Commission and the like, figure it out and spend it. But budgetarily, we're recommending at least to do that set aside of, of in total, 7 million across all funds, uh, for Eighth and Discovery. Even accounting for this, um, the general fund is still in a very strong position. I know we started this conversation about, well, you just told me, Rob, we started by 18.2 and now all of a sudden I'm down to 2.3. Oh my goodness, where did it go? Part of that is in your reserve, almost six and a half. Another million plus is in a set aside either contractually or because it's non-spendable. So you're close to 10 million of your 18.1 has been, you know, well, it. Um, 8 million of your, of your 18 is, is set aside already based on council directive and or contractually. So it's still in my, in my professional opinion, still provides you, uh, some, some great headwind for future. Same chart for you for fiscal 25, all equal. We're going to add another 1.5, close to 1.5, if not more to your fund balance. Because of the second year of state shared income tax, that's going to get it added into this. So it doesn't mean this is a one-time only. Oh my goodness, what do we do? Uh, maybe this isn't the priority. It, whatever your priorities are, council, you can, we can move that forward in the budget, knowing we're going to add at least at the state shared revenue from income tax. Back into this, uh, based on, uh, based on our analysis.
When, when will the mine tax, I call that the mine tax because they're reducing some of that. When will that tax take effect on? Uh, you know, the reduction on some of the corporate taxing being, I think that's the way I'm wording it, right?
I think you're revenue share.
Correct. So on, on the corporate income tax, vice mayor member, so that is still being considered. Um, in legislative action that's passed one chamber, not the other. That will have a negative impact. And again, it'll be two years later. We wouldn't see that first impact until fiscal 26. Based on the timing of the existing legislation, we've modeled that first year hit 72,000. From there, because they start rationing the corporate income. It's fully implemented at about 225,000 dollars a year of moving forward, if that would have. So you're taking what looks like a. Close to 2 million in income tax share, strip away. Only, and then strip away another 200,000 of the corporate income tax adjustment comes in. So that slowly starts to get down. Again, it's out there as proposal and we closely monitor that. That would look like. It doesn't impact any of these numbers, but we want to be clear that if that were to play, we want to model that out. Three years from now, what would that impact look like? But should you, if it were to come into play, should you make a decision on how to spend our ongoing revenues?
Three years, that's when the truth is out.
Right. Yes, vice mayor, absolutely. So because it's two years in arrears and then they're, they're, they're kicking the. Implementation date on the existing legislation is implementing at a year out. And it's, it slowly starts to ratchet down equal to what the individual income tax rate is. So it's basically taking it from 49 to 2.5. So when you start thinking about what's our hit, think about it, it's a 50% reduction. That can get elevator kind of conversation. Are kind of what revenues look like, any other conversations or discussions on or questions on fund balance? Great. So now we're going to move into our, our, our general fund revenue by source as it's loading here. Uh, again, wanted to show you at least from a picture perspective that was written in our staff report. Uh, putting it into a, uh, kind of a tabular format, but just, I think a picture tells a thousand words. Local sales tax on the left, that's your largest by far, the source of the general fund. So please shop local, spend local, buy local. Um, and a good portion of that, so about 1.8 million of that 9.8 goes to your, is your half cent sales tax that goes to your street program. Right? So, uh, where that number grows, uh, so does your street funding, at least what we generate here locally. If you were to compare the, uh, the left bar to the third, uh, from the left bar, those all relate to sales tax. Whether it be stuff we generate here locally or what the state is sharing with us, and those follow the same model. Uh, so you can see we're, we're looking at about $11 million just on sales taxes done locally as well as statewide that's shared that with Stafford. Uh, if you were to compare, and I'll do that on the next sheet, that second bar of 2.7 income tax share. URS, it sounds weird, but just think about it, income tax. Um, that is, that is a huge, huge, huge jump. And we now know why that anomaly is because of, uh, we have a two-year, uh, a two-year issue that we're dealing with. From there, it starts to fall off quickly. We have our franchise fees and what's included in there is our local. Our, our own, uh, utilities are paying a franchise fee in lieu. That's for use of rights of way. Uh, where they have, uh, their, their utilities and the rights of way and they, they pay their, their shares. So some of this is outside, uh, utilities, the rest of it is internal. And then from there, it kind of falls off. You can see on the far right, as far as what's also assessed locally to our, our, our citizens, and that's our, our, uh, property tax. That's roughly 1.75 of your total general fund revenues. It's a very small component. I bring that up because sometimes you'll hear from our state legislators, uh, that, uh, well, cities are washing cash. They could just raise property taxes to do it. I'm here to tell you right now, there's, it would take all of our collective lifetimes, uh, to raise our property taxes. Uh, through the statutorily required limits, we can't raise it all in one. We're, we're limited on how much you could increase that year over year. It would take our collective lifetime to talk about raising property taxes if they took food for home consumption sales tax away. It is, it is not that easy to say, well, just, 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 you know, move it, this one and then add that one. It would not happen. It will not happen. So just to give you that kind of, um. Discussion point, should you be talking to our, our legislative team, it, you know, it's, it's a legislative decision if they so choose. But just understand it's not as easy to fix the problem if in fact they were to, if, if that, um, bill were to become law. And again, the, the governor did veto that. Um, so that, that, that helped preserve. Maybe one other thing of, of, if I can, on a little deviation on that food for home consumption. State law already, um, exempts any, um. WIP food stamps or any other federal assistance or state assistance funding that's spent to the grocery store on food for home consumption. There's no tax assessed. So those that are, are, are in need of that assistance, they're not paying any tax with those assistance dollars. So just, uh, just to be clear. So again, your revenues are very strong. We are looking at, uh, at least 17 million. Uh, in total on all of our revenue sources, and that's before we start talking inter-fund transfers and the like. Oftentimes, well, how does this compare to the last year? Well, we have to pull out a good portion of that sales tax or the income tax. Uh, because that, that is a one time. But we were level set between over the other. Uh, we were looking at about, uh, 14.7 million in revenues in fiscal 23. To compare to fiscal 24, we're looking at, uh, 5.9 million. So about a million dollar increase year over year, and a lot of that is due to our local sales growth that's happening. It's been very strong. Um, so those that had money in their pocket, they're spending locally, uh, we do appreciate that. For the state, uh, you go to ours, our, our. That of that bar in the middle there of the, of the license tax gets transferred out to our street program. So it's not available, uh, for any other, um, source or any other need based on council's directive. Uh, just to make sure that, that, that this body does understand that it is always your choice on how to spend general fund money. So you're saying, I want all of VLT to go to, to the street and the, the street program to the herd program to maintain. Um, that we are not told to do that based on the state, that is your directive. So anytime there's general fund money, that means general, it's up to the council to decide how it gets spent. So we start talking about some of our largest revenue sources year over year as the, as the bar chart loads. Looking left to right, uh, the left column is our budget for the current year based on that revenue source. So that first bar, that first series of bars left to right is local sales taxes, what we're budgeted for. The next middle bar is what we are, are recognizing right now and what we anticipate by the end of the fiscal year. And then that bar to the far right of those three bars of for local sales tax is what we're projecting for fiscal 24. So if I were to just show you, what are we expecting budget over budget, if we, we, why are, why are we growing so much? Well, we're growing because we're growing inside the current fiscal year. So we're really comparing, uh, next year's uptick to our experience in fiscal 23. We're not looking at saying, well, we budgeted that number and a very conservative number. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're doing a lot better, uh, than we anticipated. And we're now taking that forward and saying we anticipate that growth pattern to not necessarily be straight line, uh, but to continue. The real anomaly comes in that next grouping of bars, uh, of state shared income tax. You know, like what happened? Kind of already told you the story. The, the state legislature did enact legislation to lower. Individual income tax rates and that will, we will see that hit in two years. So for the, the, the next two years, we'll see an uptick because we get a, a higher percentage of older numbers, which were at the higher rate. So we're not modeling that to be ongoing revenue at all. State shared sales tax, as you can see in the third series, is following similar growth pattern as our local experience. Uh, so that, that is, that is there. And the rest of it is pretty much flat. Franchise fees are flat, a little bit on VLT, it's actually dropping a little bit based on conversation that I just indicated before. In property tax, you're only growing based upon, uh, your evaluation growing and or growth of new construction. So those dollars are not, uh, moving the needle relative to your general fund ongoing revenue capability. So as far as now taking that experience and saying, well, where are we and what can we do? If you recall, I said, well, we're estimating a revenue of about 17 million. So when we start looking at 17 million, we know that some money's going to come in because of inter-fund transfers. There are sources that the general government supplies to the enterprise funds and it's appropriate for them to pay that back. Similarly to grants where we can allocate a certain percentage to grants, uh, whatever that grant order will allow. We then pull that back into the general fund or the appropriate fund to where that happens. In this context, general fund. We did not want to model so that third line is taking out that, 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 that one-time income tax, uh, anomaly. We're not going to show that as year over year. Why? We added that to the fund balance in our prior slides. It stands available for projects or other reasons. Again, we know we need to transfer up money. So 2.5 goes to her streets. Why? Because they have some sales tax and your VLT. And we're transferring out to economic development, at least what we're budgeting right now, uh, for the, uh, chamber contract. Into a separate economic development fund. We then also modeled based upon our conversation over the two departmental work sessions where we went over all of our detailed budgets for departments. We have estimated that that ongoing expenditures, 12.1 million dollars or 12.2 million. So at the end of the day, of our ongoing revenues that are coming in, stripping out anything that's not, that, that. A one-two source or if they transfer that's necessary out. Uh, the city is sitting in a position, at least in the general fund, that you have a million dollars. On ongoing revenue if this council so chooses. So what that means is your revenues are coming in higher. Assume you do nothing. To your fund balance at the end of fiscal 24. Five to that fund balance that we just talked about.
Didn't have supplementals?
Not yet.
So there's no supplementals either?
So if we were, if, as we brought to you in our, in our budget presentations, we had that group of supplementals. If you recall, it was in a separate column. Why could we want to do our comparative year over year? What's, what's happening? What is the experience? Is it inflation? Uh, some, you know, the. Escalator that we need to worry about? Uh, what has been that experience? Then in one of those columns, we said supplemental. And if we were to add up all of those supplementals that we brought to you and, and, and heard some positive feedback in regards to the council on, you know, kind of move those forward. Uh, and, and see if that's what the council so chooses. All those supplementals for the general fund, um, as well as adding the story in, in our presentation from, uh, from HR. And city manager's office relative to compensation and benefits. All of that in total will be about 1.2, 1.3 million. All the supplementals as well as what we're talking about here, which would then leave you still 1.3 in ongoing revenues to spend for some other purpose. So at the end of the day, council, there is, there is, there's an opportunity should the council so choose, uh, to spend part of this 2.5. On the supplementals that we've already brought to you, as well as the supplemental that you're about ready to hear, which is dealing with, uh, compensation and compression. As well as enhancing certain benefits to, uh, to our employees. You would still have money left over in the general fund, uh, to do, if anything that the councils may choose. Or that could, that 1.3 could fall to the fund balance at the end of 24 for some future purpose. This is a similar story in all funds, her streets, enterprise. It's the same, it's the same construct relative to availability of ongoing revenues to pay for ongoing expenses, uh, should the council so choose to do so. So we didn't bring anything, if you recall, one of the items I brought at very early on in my first presentation to you on our departmental. Uh, uh, conversations, as well as even in our, our kind of fiscal policies is we're not going to bring a supplemental to you if we can't afford it. So we're not going to bring something to you and say, well, council, we really want to do this. Let's raise revenue. Let's raise taxes. That, that's not, that's not what the, the, the staff is here. Staff is here to bring you a proposal that, that. Our, our ongoing revenues are coming in strong. And we have identified, uh, some services to the community that we want to add, such as neighborhood enforcement, code enforcement. Uh, such as, uh, some, some, uh, other one times, whether it be a, a study in our street program to look at our pavement assessment. And then tonight, we're here also to talk about another one, which is to deal with compensation issues as well as benefit. So overall, uh, your revenue stream are strong. So, uh, vice mayor member of the council, you know, staff is seeking discussion, uh, in regards to, uh, at least staff's, uh, recommendation or approach. On use of available fund balance and ongoing revenues. Uh, either way, we will bring back, um, however, uh, this council is so directing staff. Uh, to come back, whether it be a couple of different models or to take a particular direction. Ultimately, on May 8th is when we are scheduled for our 10 of the budget adoption. Again, that's your upper limit that you can't go, go above, uh, based on state statute. Uh, we would hope to also bring to you that week prior, a city manager's proposed budget, which would encapsulate everything. So we could have one, uh, kind of final conversation before we bring a final package to you, uh, for adoption. So with that, vice mayor, um, done with the presentation, be glad to have any, uh, answer, any questions you might have.
Anybody have any?
Just, just a comment, Rob. How much I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this and, and. I'm not new anymore, but as somebody that's in their. Initial term, uh, everybody who's been involved in getting us to these numbers, past council members. Past city manager, city manager, all our staff, uh, this is a fantastic, uh. Situation that we're in.
Anybody else have any?
So I just wanted to make. Had a question today about, you know, as we go forward, we're going to talk about compensation. And so Rob has shown you two balances. This one is. Disappearing. Disappearing, um, the next one, go back to that other side. So basically, you know, it's saying that you had a fund balance of seven point three million. Now, this is the savings account fund balance, okay? So when he goes through and provides you with a list of P S P R S, Ethan, Discovery, El Paso, and then the payroll system. The two point three, four million in that slide is one time money. That's not the money, the ongoing money that shows up. So this two point three, four, seven, this is in your savings account. So this is saying, I've got seven point three million dollars or seven point four million dollars above line in the savings account, above the fifty percent plus prior year debt service. All of these items here are one time expenditures that if we make them, you still have two point three, four million dollars in your one time. Now that's different and it's a different source than two slides down. Or three. So again, that's in your one time and that's in your savings account.
Likes to go through each one of them, is this the one you want, Rob?
The job, get tired. So this one is your ongoing, right? So this isn't the same as that other one. The other one is in your savings account is used for one time expenditures. You've gone through a process, you put that in your savings account, it's available to spend on those capital projects. This one represents our ongoing revenue, right? And this represents currently the amount of revenue over expenditure for the current budget cycle. Of which we're going to talk about compensation and how that would impact this two point four million, as would the supplemental that we have. But I just wanted to make it clear because we had had a conversation, okay? Well, one affect the other, there are two different pools of money. The earlier one is one time, this one's for ongoing, it's its own number that we would use if you choose to, to do supplemental and compensation. Which Danielle's not going to talk about, I just wanted to make sure you understood there are two different numbers.
That's I can make.
Evening Vice Mayor and Council. This is a request for Mayor and Council to provide discussion and direction on compensation bed and benefits for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. The city of Stafford H R department, working with the city manager, department heads and city council recently. Reconstructed personnel policies related to compensation and benefits. As a result of this process, a refined and consolidated compensation plan has been written and will be brought to council soon for Google. Part of refining the city of Stafford compensation practices included conducting a market review to align. City of Stafford pay ranges to the current market value, which we will review tonight. In addition to reviewing the market review, we are going to review the changes that I R S has made to the. Max annual allowable contribution and a proposed H S A policy. And finally, we are going to review insurance rate increases as well as options for the employer paid subsidy. I'd like to start with a recap of what has happened as far as compensation and benefits over the last year before diving into the steps that need to be taken.
And everybody can see it on their laptops, right? So you guys can see this anyway, right?
Okay, so we're just on slide two. To continue to develop our overall city compensation and benefits plan. First, at the beginning of two thousand twenty two, human resources started by reactivating and promoting benefits that elapsed. Things such as the golf course membership, enterprise discounts and tickets at work. Then the city increased the employer paid subsidy for insurance premiums from seventy thirty to eighty five fifteen. With an intent to look into increasing the employer paid subsidy even further this fiscal year. We then provided a three percent citywide increase with the intent to redo our compensation practices, bringing that into standard this fiscal year. We redeveloped the second vacation policies by increasing the benefits of both to better benefit employees and the city. For me, the R H S plan at the request of the employees after conducting a benefit survey. We then conducted work sessions to develop a comprehensive compensation plan and streamlined all compensation related policy. Plan. We also conducted work sessions to look further into the police step program and journey level line worker increase program. To discuss how these practices fit into our overall compensation plan. The police step program. Every two years. Till they reach ten years of service. Police officers do not receive performance based merits or COLAs while they're in this program. As far as the apprentice line worker in this program, this entails an increase equal to the difference between the base wage of the journeyman lineman and the base wage of the apprentice line worker. Divided by four for the first four years of service. The apprentice line workers don't receive performance based merits or COLAs, uh, until they enter the citywide medical system after four years of service. Any questions so far?
Where you might want to go with those two items?
Well, the, the electrical seems to be, uh. Quite as is, as presented to me. And that wasn't, it, it was kind of standing alone, correct, prior? They were already doing this, but it wa, it wasn't.
Right, it just wasn't in a formal.
Right.
Policy.
As, as, right, same with the police step program.
That it, the police's wasn't the same. They started out at six and then we got eight, now we're at ten. And, yeah, so. What the justification for that was, I'm not sure. Because if we were helping. Get some of the cadets or whatever, when they got out of school, this one is a story because I've heard like ten. Was to get them up to speed and get training in there and as they trained, they received benefit from that. And they were said that it was going to be, get them up to speed would be six years, then it turned into eight, then it turned into ten. Ten years getting them up to speed is quite a long time.
So at this point, it's just a guarantee every two years for an increase.
Sure.
Uh, it, I don't know that it's totally necessary anymore, that being that we are assuming this compensation plan gets approved because it has. COLAs and performance based merits, um, built into the program. And. So in a sense, assuming that we have performance based merits and COLAs getting approved regularly. I don't know that the police step program will be helpful. In fact, they might get less of an increase because it is only six percent.
That was something I was going to ask, we could have a COLA that's.
What if our, right, what if our COLAs and, uh, and our performance based merits end up being more than this?
Right, and the reverse, if, if we hit some tougher times and we can't give COLA, then the police are guaranteed the increase. And.
So like, like I had said in past work sessions, at the time, I believe it was definitely needed for their recruitment efforts for whatever they were going through at that time. Is it totally necessary now?
My question is, how do you do a performance?
So they wouldn't be getting the, if, if the step program goes through and it's written into the compensation plan, they would be in performance based merit. But how a performance based increase were is essentially, um, their performance evaluation is the same as all staff. And their supervisors, the captain and the chief are evaluating their performance.
At a police.
However, they're doing it now, they do it every year.
Yeah.
Don't you get an evaluation?
Yeah, but it's.
Well, that's what they do.
It's, it's like why.
Right.
It's the same form, is it not?
Yeah, it's the same form and it's. I mean, the best way to describe it without looking at it is just overall performance, um, reliability, attendance, cooperation, communication.
But I think what I'm trying to say is. Like, how do you, like, from, let's say, a person that works the street department or works in utilities? And they're out there, you know, digging, one guy digs a hundred and fifty trenches in one day and the other guy does eighty. So he's like, oh, well, you can obviously see one guy's working harder than the other. But then the police, how do you?
I mean, supervisors have to be able to know if they're in place of performing or not. And it's not necessarily based on numbers like, oh, you're doing this many pullovers or you're doing this many. It's not like a manufacturing, like a factory you have quota to make, it's just their overall performance. And I can certainly send you that performance email so you can see what's on it, but when you read it, you realize it's not necessarily about. Numbers, it's just how are they performing overall as an employee?
So I won't go off of like, this guy's working day shift, he's going to have sixty calls. Over the month and this guy's going to have, it's working night shift, he's going to have ten calls.
Right.
And, and the chief's doing those anyway, so, correct?
Currently, yes, we do, but they are done by the different sergeants. So depending on which sergeant you fall under, you're going to get a different evaluation.
Well, and that's true, that's true for every department.
For every department that way, and so it does become, and we don't have twenty four hour coverage on our sergeants either. So a lot of guys are out there on shifts that don't have a supervisor for time, lots of long period of time, so it's hard to say. Basically, the calls are getting answered, I don't know if they're going above and beyond or something. The, the biggest thing here, clarify for you, Councilman. Lopez is, this started originally as an eight year plan and in eight years they were mashed out, in other words, they got the end of range in eight years. They've now backed that down to ten years, six percent, which gets them to about seventy five, eighty percent. So there's still room for them to grow within the city plan. And it also still gives us an opportunity to be able to hire and say, this is a guaranteed raise for this many years so that we get more. Uh, interest in our position. We currently have the position you guys gave to us, we filled it and immediately lost another one, we haven't had another applicant over six months, we're still not getting that. So anything we can do to get the interest is going to pay off. And, and that guaranteed raise, I agree, that might be years where the council says, hey, cost of living is five percent plus merit and you know what? They got seven percent that year, good for them, but year over year for ten years, that's not going to continue. Whereas we can guarantee them that raise for ten years, it makes a huge difference.
Chief, let me jump back if you don't mind, how are you currently doing these evaluations?
So we do them just like the rest of the city, but the, each sergeant has a number of officers assigned to them.
Right.
Um, so they're doing their evaluations. The hardest part with it is like I said, they're not on twenty four hour a day with them, those kind of things. So they're doing evaluations based on whatever time they have to see them or.
But they're still pulling it off.
Yeah, they're doing it, but it's, the, the hardest part of the valuations, um, is for, for our department is, it like, I think Councilor Arbezo said. If, if somebody digs a hundred feet and somebody digs eighty, it's easy to see the difference. Somebody answers twelve calls on a day shift, they're busy, but they wrote one line reports twelve times and somebody goes out at night and gets a bar fight with a stabbing, they're now.
Right, but does, does, does any employee evaluation in the whole city have anything to do with how many feet of ditch you did?
No, I'm just saying, but in, in general, I can show they're doing their, their evaluation as far as their, their community relations, those kind of things, their, their, um.
Whatever's on the evaluation.
Yeah, there, there are certain things, but they don't really fit real well in what we're doing day to day as far as. I mean, are they, are they doing public, yes, are they doing it? This is where I struggle with evaluation, I worked for the county for thirteen years, they did merit, just kind of like this. In thirteen years, I got one raise, the guy that answered way less, did way less work than me in law enforcement, I got a raise every year for thirteen years. So I run an issue personally with merit because it becomes a favoritism instead of a performance.
If you would agree then that that could be just as possible in any department.
Yes, I'm not saying it's just a police issue, I'm, that's just what I, but I think merit is a struggle. I don't disagree with what they're doing, I think it's a great system, what they've come up with, I struggle personally with merit, that's just me.
Right, but again, it, all those problems can happen in every department, so we're either, we're either.
It can become a favoritism, very simple, but it's not saying it will.
Right, again, anywhere.
Yeah, so I think fundamentally, we've got a couple of issues, right? If we look at compensation in general, I think it can be applied to police and other employees, the same, there's the same difficulties that run. Really what Chief Four is talking about, which is this idea of favoritism is going to creep in no matter what department you're doing in. If we look at the electric compensation plan, clearly it is what it is intended to be, which is an acceleration, ten percent a year is acceleration, three percent a year is not, right? So ten percent a year through electric is an acceleration program. They're also being evaluated based on a, uh, industry standard by a third party. They go through a great deal of testing, including an annual test, like that would then determine whether or not they move to the next level. So there fundamentally is a difference between those two programs. And I think based even on what Chief Four is saying and Councilman Arbezo, fundamentally what we're looking at in the police. So I think the electric system, I think, is one that is unique and does actually address some of the issues that were raised by the police, which I, is this idea of acceleration and so on. So I think that the electric program does do that and they do it by an external evaluation to an industry standard. In the case of police, and I think again, uh, chief, you know, jump in here, I think what we're really saying is. We want to guarantee police a raise every year, I think fundamentally, that's what the police table does. And again, I mean, is that essentially?
Well, basically it's trying to keep us competitive with other.
Right, right, but it does it through that mechanism.
Trying to keep it, right, leaving us after you put that much money into an academy and those kind of things.
Right, and so if you're looking at being competitive, I think what the chief is saying is the way to do that with police. Is to guarantee the raise so that even if the employees were getting a raise, that was of a different.
Right.
So I just want to be clear that fundamentally, the characteristic that's different in that plan is the guarantee of a raise.
And again, I get that conceptually.
Yeah, and I will clarify, it's, it's more of a, an understanding, the officers know that when they're getting hired, like get this every two years. And yes, there may be two years that the council gives cost of living that they're behind on year two. But normally by year three, year four, they've moved, it's kind of one of those, they move ahead because the likelihood of three percent guaranteed every year becomes somewhat an issue. But I may be wrong, I'll be telling you, in two, three years, I may come back and go, Mr. Cassell was a hundred percent right, we were.
Well, and, and it's an excellent point.
It's where we're at.
Fundamentally, this gets back to a more basic issue and it's an issue that you raised, right? And then the idea is consistency and it's the whole idea behind the compensation plan. So again, if you're going to say to your employees that we value you, and so in the middle of the budget, we gave some raises to the police, which worked, by the way. Right, because they had fallen behind, we gave an increase and we filled two positions quickly. So the lesson there was, if you pay your employees enough money and you're competitive, you will fill your positions. And I've had to do that in other areas of the city, including the garage and community development where I couldn't hire anybody. And I had to make some changes there and voila, you had to hire. So I think regardless of which you go, the direction you go in, I think that the, that the, the moral of the story, if you will, is. Consistent compensation for your employees, right? Because that's what's going to keep you competitive and that's going to keep you from the situation where we'll get into in the next section, which is this idea. Of a market analysis that is, uh, significant in the gap that it's, it's in the, in the compression that it's fixing because it's gone for so long. Right, you're always going to be in a situation where, hey, there's a recession and so the COLA merit gives council the ability to make that adjustment or. We don't want to give three percent raises in a six percent world, right? So we're getting some additional revenue because of that inflation. It allows us in that particular year to react to the environment we're in and give a compensation that's commensurate with the environment you find yourself in. So your employees aren't losing ground. So again, completely a council decision on how you want to do this. But I think the fundamental message here is to be consistent in your compensation of your employees going forward, whether it's police or anybody else.
This is jumping ahead, Danielle, but when the, the market, um, did that slide the police forward? I know most.
Um, so if, if you remember, we had fixed their range by about five thousand a few months ago, so that helped, but you do see.
A little more.
A little more to get them into the market value and then just like all the other employees, we fixed compression amongst the employees.
Right, and I know some were probably in better shape than others, but the police did need to be shifted a little higher again. And then one other quick comment, uh, chief. A, after the ten years, you're back to the evaluation anyway for COLA, so you're.
And I, and I understand that, the biggest benefit for this is that, that guaranteed when we're hiring someone, this is where we're going to try and keep you competitive, at least for this amount of time. The likelihood is in this, and the, the mentality is if I can keep somebody there for eight, ten years in the department, they're less likely to just jump ship. It's harder for them to go to another department. Point, you know, ten years into a career, whereas if we're always behind and they come in and go, I've been here three years and I haven't got a raise, I haven't done this, they tend to start looking.
Right, no, I get the, I completely get the reinforcement and motivation, but. But just to, we we gotta get into better evaluation.
It works and no, you're wrong, it doesn't work, but it's hard sometimes when you're like, okay, customer relations, we live in a in a world where ninety percent of our customers aren't happy to see us begin with. And so you get into that, what's customer relation?
On your valuation?
I was, yes, I was years ago told by a boss years ago in police work, if someone's not complaining, you're not trying hard enough.
Right.
So what's my customer relations? Did I get enough complaints or did I not get enough guy? That's kind of all those weird thing. That's where I get into.
But we trust you.
But we do it.
To fill, to evaluate based on what you're, the knowledge you're just saying, you, the understanding of what you have. You're gonna give a fair fair evaluation precisely because of that.
Well, and 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 the reason, like I said, it goes back to sometime, depends on who your supervisor is too.
Right.
And that's where it gets kind of questioned. So like I said, I'm not here, that part's not really, I don't think the concern here, it's the, do we need to keep that step system to to recruit and to continue to uh bring in or do we not? That's kind of where I think they were going with.
Oh, and it's, do we want to keep the guarantee? Because you could have the step system without the guarantee. The question really, again, fundamentally is, are you guaranteeing a raise every year for police? And the implication being that potentially you're not giving it to the rest of staff? Because if you're guaranteeing it for them, right, then the issue is that, well, if it's unique, then the implication is that maybe not everybody's getting it. So that really is what you have to wrestle with. If you want to put it in there, you can always still have the step. The question is, do you guarantee, always guarantee the raise for the police?
Didn't we? Seems like the reason that this is important is so that they can see where they're gonna be in so many years. What about that is not important to the line worker or the or the guy driving the trash truck? I mean, if if we're trying to recruit, don't they too want to know where they're at?
I would say yes, and I is that the market analysis is designed to say, where should this salary range be? And then with the years of service, you place people based with their experience. So the COLA merit system really is designed to allow you the flexibility to respond to the environment you're in. So five years ago, you know, a place you might have been one and a half percent, right? And that would have an impact also on your revenue. So if you gave a three percent raise with a one percent merit, you're pretty good. Now you might be falling behind. So the idea is that the market analysis, in fact, kind of says where you should be, right? Because you're saying, here's the universe I'm dealing with. This is what we typically would pay for this position. Let's go out and identify that and provide that range. And then within that range, you're saying, in a given year, based on the circumstances you find yourself in, what does that COLA merit system look like?
So the adjustment, we do every how often?
Two, three years.
The market.
The market review is every three years. And then assuming we pass the compensation plan, I'll be bringing COLAs and performance-based merits.
And so that doesn't apply to the police if they're getting a.
It does. If if the market changes for their range, we're gonna adjust their range. So the market review does, but not the COLA and the performance-based.
And until after the ten years.
That that actually would help, it not, it helps both sides. Because if we keep that that guaranteed in, and yes, you give a large cost of living, those kind of things, where else to keep up? When they do the market evaluation, if we've fallen behind during that that increase, we're gonna get brought back to where we should be. So there's always every three years of basically correcting for everybody, for every department.
Hey, some of those things change. I mean, like policemen twenty years ago weren't worth what they are today. I mean, it wasn't the that hurts.
Right, and that's.
I mean, seriously, they they deal with things that we never couldn't have dreamed up twenty years ago. So, you know, it just in the last four or five years, the fact that kids don't want to be a policeman anymore. They used to all want to be a policeman. And so that's, that has that has raised the price and that's the market survey has to has to be shown.
And and this is not a joke, but I wanted to ride on the trash truck. I think I I was a normal kid, wanted to be on the back of the, but that changed too. Once it got automated, that's not fun to do. I don't want to drive it now.
At this point, we have a compensation plan. Charlie, we have two subcomponents, the police version and the electric version. There's something different. I would leave those in forward. And then at some point, we can vote on those components, but I'm not, I'm kind of not getting a a real.
Is it the staff's recommendation? To leave those two components in or is it a? Matthew, is that, or is that grand?
I asked that last time and said there wo- there's no recommendation.
Well, it's hard to know if it's gonna help them or not, is the is the problem.
Right.
So even if we ended up leaving it for now, we might need to revisit and revisit it in a year or two.
It seems seems to me like.
If we're being progressive with our employee increases and we're getting, you you know, for example, right now, the average COLA increase is four percent every year. And if they're only getting six every two, just with COLAs alone, the rest of staff is getting more increases than that. So that's my concern with it. So not only are we trying to do regular COLA increases, but we're also trying to do performance-based merits. So if we stay for our compensation, it may end up hurting them. If we don't, it guarantees them. But I think our overall goal is to be progressive.
But at the end of three years, we're gonna do another survey, which is gonna affect.
You can do it either way, though.
Yeah, I mean, either way, we do the market review and that just changes the range, but annually, we're doing COLA.
It seems to me that it's been working, I just don't know why, why it wouldn't. I mean, somebody's gonna tell me that this doesn't work.
The only issue is guaranteeing a raise for part of your employee base. That's the real issue and that's the discussion we had mid-year bump. And again, I'm not saying it didn't.
Was exactly, we did it was so that they could project, you will be here in ten years.
Right. And that's fine. If council wants to guarantee the police a raise every two years, but not provide that same guarantee to the rest of the employee base, that's a decision that you would make. I mean, in essence, you're you're applying the same guarantee to electric. If it was me, I wouldn't do that only in that if you feel compelled to give the police a raise, that's more likely that you're gonna give the rest of the employees a raise too. So if you group them together, then everybody probably would benefit from that, right? Um, and again, you could still have the guarantee for the police in terms of the step and giving them three percent. Maybe the rest of the employees don't get as much that year as the police did, right? But I I, the only issue I have is I don't want to leave the rest of the employees behind. That's my concern.
I think we need to play catch up right now, but I just going forward, I I want it to be fair on all all fields.
Right. And again, and the approach could be, hey, police are guaranteed a raise. That means that the rest of the employees are gonna get one too. It's just a question of how much. So we ride their coattails in a way. But again, my concern as the manager is, and it was the same thing I mentioned when we talked about catching them up, which they needed. Let's not leave everybody else behind because it's convenient to just give one part of the employee base a raise and then we leave the rest of the.
No, I think I think we all agreed that this was had to be fixed right now and at at this time of the year, we'd fix the rest of.
Right. But I think the chief's concern is we get a guarantee and that's important to us because it allows us to be competitive. That same logic applies to everyone else as well.
Well, I think too, but.
It it, for me, it's it's more, probably more than anything, it's it's vital for that recruitment thought. And I don't disagree. I think it's vital for the recruitment because we've had the issue with fleet. We've had the digits. It's something we have to be able to do. But it's worked very well for us. We have quite a few that have done it, been through it and are still in it. And so for me, that's why I want to keep it is to make sure. But I said, in three years, when you do the the evaluation, if we've fallen behind again, if you know as well as I know that police are gonna go, hey, we fell behind, we need to be on the city system. But I I would like to keep it the way it is, at least for the first three-year kind of term and see where we're at. So we at least have that option.
Council could come in and say, we're not doing anybody's race. And that's, right? I mean, even though you have a step, you still, and I think because we have now distilled it down to its essence and we've made it part of the compensation plan, what you have is the ability to engage with those plans every year, because now they're in front of you, right?
I like the fact that we almost, yeah, almost to the point where we understand what's happening.
So I think what we do is we leave it in for now and let's let's, you know, because I I I get the sense that there's some support unless there's other input. I've just, it's kind of uneven. I don't know. And again, some some are a little quiet. I mean, Mike, I haven't heard from you.
I'm listening. I'm taking it all in.
All right. I'm I'm in support of of leaving it like it is, as long as we know that if it fails, somebody will fix it.
So could I get some, you're talking about just a a year coming back, taking another.
I think every year needs to be.
Well, but but this is.
Discussion needs to happen.
Leave as is now.
I I think so.
And yet I kind of lean towards, you know, doing away, in in other words, the line workers and then everybody else is under the same, the same, right?
And I, and I think the essence of this is really the following, whether it's an electrician, and I don't know if I said that right. Or a police officer or an employee that doesn't fit either one of those. The focus has to be, let's continue to provide consistent compensation within the plan that we've now laid out. Whatever those components look like, let's stay consistent and continue to give those raises. The police have a step table. That step table says three percent, you know, six percent every two years. The electricians or the the journey level line worker or the apprentice or whatever you call them, they have a system. Let's make sure we're moving it through that system and let's make sure we don't leave the rest of the employees behind. Let's keep moving them through the system as well at whatever level we're comfortable in doing. And I think maybe that's where we go into this in the beginning as a starting point. And then again, as we go back year after year, you can see where you want to go from there, but it's the consistency for all the employees.
But then we have three different groups.
You do.
We're doing with. Either they just have two different groups we're doing.
Which is what?
Line and then everybody else, you know, the line workers.
Okay.
And then everybody else to the same.
We, we didn't know any of this till we start talking about it. So if you want to leave it as as is, it was eight years. And I believe you didn't only get six percent, but you got a raise if we gave out a raise too. That wasn't fair.
Well, this isn't that anyway, so that so it it got cleaned up from there.
Yeah, the way it's written right now is different than what we first were given.
Mm-hmm.
And this was kind of cleaned up a bit. The electrical workers had been doing this for years and years. It came into the light because all this came into the light. So theirs was mainly housekeeping and make it a written policy on what they were doing. That's the way theirs were going for years and years. There's no po- there was no policy in the police department. That's what we're trying to achieve.
Well, this is putting implemented in two thousand and five.
Yeah.
So.
But it was never written down, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it was never, so this is implemented in two thousand and five because when I first started, we had officers that had twenty-plus years on and I was just starting and I was making like a thousand dollars less than they were. And so it got to a point where nobody was moving. And so even like, it was whether we got a COLA or we didn't, it was, we stayed the same. And so.
Well, the compression, this, the way we're doing compression, solve the distribution. The thing is that consistent movement. So the salary survey will move the ranges so that you're in the right range. But again, as we said before, council has to be consistent in the implementation over time. And then I don't think it's as big of an issue, um, as long as we're doing it for everybody. And again, if there's some, obviously, the the electric is a little different as well. So anyway, um.
Just have one comment for you guys about the line worker. So within the electric department, that apprentice program isn't a position that's always filled. Once they finish their apprenticeship, they'll become alignment and that position is no longer. We get a full crew of journeyman linemen and apprentice program no longer exists. So it's not everybody in the electric department. It's just that one specific position.
And there's things in in every department that should get it. Like for CDLs, we pay a little extra for herbicides, we pay a little extra. There's things in the police department, I recognize that way. But like they say, you speak another language. There's a difference between being able to hold your own in court in Spanish and then street talking. So, you know, that comes under the supervisor. And yeah, unfairness can come both ways because I was looking at it both ways. There's usually two reasons why we get upset and that's the pay and the leadership. So both of them got to step up and get moving and be fair.
So my my thing is gonna be, why don't we do this? Why don't we bring compensation with the two subcategories and actually just take a vote on each of those? Right? So we could do compensation, which would be all the vacation and sick and all the other things, the longevity that we've built in now for employees in general. And then we'll have a vote on the police and then the electric version. Because I think we're kind of, there's a little bit of a variation on like what we want to group or not group. Let's just, at this point, I don't think we'll we'll make too much more progress. I think there's support support for for both. So we'll bring it to you in a way in 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 April because we'll bring different pieces and we can vote on those individual pieces. And then depending on that vote, whatever gets voted in, that will be included when we construct the budget ultimately that you vote on in May. So why don't we take that approach if that works for for the council? All right. And then we can go on to the next leg of the journey here, if that's okay with.
Okay, good. One more thing, because I agree with what the chief said. Even after three years, we're gonna look at the market again and get her set up. The compensation package that you're bringing forward, I know is a big one for you, Mr. Anfield, so. Um, you know, that's where we can re-correct again, if need be.
So that was just a recap of what we've gone through this last year. So our next steps include tonight reviewing the salary survey conducted by HR um that has been underway for the past year, that will bring our pay ranges into the market value. Uh, we're gonna review how this project will relieve compression with employee wages. The, this is a cleanup and it's a precursor needed to, uh, that needs to happen before the new compensation plan is implemented. We're gonna review the HSA maximum contributions and the new proposed policy. And we're gonna review the changes to the employer paid subsidy. And then hopefully on April tenth, be able to bring all this back to you guys for consideration.
And you know, I, I know what you're saying about the HSA and it's six months behind or ahead or whatever. But we've had things in the past where we, because you're asking to just do it and now it's automatic on how HSA goes. Automatic stuff always gets away from us. And we don't hear about it again next year or, and I know coming before us, ask it again, you're six months behind is the thing that's your point, your main point. There's gotta be a way we can hear from you each year.
Well, if, and that's a good point. And so if if we're gonna do it that way, I can always bring it as like an action item in January. It's still not waiting for the budget cycle so that we stay in line with the IRS. That way we're not like lagging behind by six months. So if you guys still want to see it every year in some type of way, I can just bring it before the budget.
I love the future council to see it every year's, all of our stuff. So each year, new councils know what we're doing each time and we say, well, why'd they do that? Why, you know, we we need to see it every year what we did. Think that's my opinion.
We'll talk about that in just a minute. So the first thing that we're gonna review is the actual market review itself. The goal of this presentation is to provide the methodology and the results to the mi- market review by reviewing the work that's been done over the last year. It was done in three phases. Phase one was job descriptions and work experience. Phase two was differentials and certifications and then phase three was the market review itself. So phase one of the internal salary survey was released in October two thousand and twenty-two in which department heads reviewed all their job descriptions for accuracy, as well as worked with HR to calculate years of experience on their staff. So ensuring that our job descriptions were up to date was vital to being able to compare our positions to other cities and towns. When calculating experience on staff, experience was given based on the definition as we wrote it in the compensation plan. And as a reminder, that reads like this, the relevant past work experience refers to past work history. It does not include volunteer work, work shadowing or internships that is related to the position of which employee is being hired for. Past work experience needs to be related to the skills and knowledge required to perform the job. Key skills, duties and qualifications described on the job description should be the guiding factor in determining if the employee has work experience relative relevant for the city of Sapporo. So department heads confirm their work experience on their staff. Uh, they provide a job title, years in each title and contact information to verify the work experience on everybody. Now that HR has recorded on everyone a running total that would be kept in on record in HR. Any questions on that? Phase two was the differentials. Um, it was released in December two thousand and twenty-two, in which department heads collected all recent certifications. And try to calculate. So all degrees and certifications have been confirmed to be current, uh, before calculating a differential on an employee. Copies have been saved in all employee personnel files and charge is going to track expiration dates on these certifications. Only those that are keeping their certifications current get the differentials.
And I have a question. Is there, how many reclassifications is there going to be?
So reclasses, I believe there was only five or six requested. That's, that's. Different than actually changing the range for a position. So it's two different.
Okay, how much is it going to cost?
We're going to get into.
Are going to be supplementals that are. No reclasses were done in the sal- in the salary survey. All, all they were.
So, and then this is just a reminder of how those differentials work. Um. So we gave differentials based on the definitions as we wrote it in the compensation plan. So as a reminder, the language differential. Uh, when a position is critical to having a employee that's bilingual for, for translation and interpretation purposes, a differential pay of five. Will be added to the employee's pay. As far as the degree differential. Uh, when an employee completes a degree program that significantly improves their non-skill abilities in their line of work. And is not listed under the minimum qualifications on the job description, employees may receive up to a total of five percent. For example, they get two and a half percent for an associate's degree and up to five percent for a bachelor's or master's degree. As far as the certification differentials. Pay increases for obtaining any newly acquired certifications must be directly related to their current position or a higher position within. Their same field of work to prepare them for potential promotional opportunities and they get fifty cents for. A preferred certification and a dollar for a required certification. Any questions on that?
You, some of your stuff. It has to benefit. The department, I think was it. So. If they get degrees and stuff in other fields, that's not going to benefit us?
Not necessarily. It does need to, um. Be significant to their position. Yes, and it can't be. Um, a degree that's required on their job description. So we're not going to give you a differential for something that you're supposed to have to be even doing the job in the first place. We're going to give you a differential if you go above and behind and get an additional degree that helps you and pertains to your position.
We have a worker who really doesn't need a CDL, but yet get, gets one. Are we going to pay him for it?
No, not necessarily. It does have to be directly related and based on this definition, it has to be needed for their position, either preferred or required. And the department head makes that determination if it, if it truly helps within that position or not.
We had another storm and trees went down. We needed a CDL driver out there and we needed a utilizing, he'd be benefit to me.
Yes, I mean, we have plenty of CDL drivers. It's not like we're going to have to go. Get somebody that doesn't typically do that.
Are we still doing the fifty percent if it's not essential?
So it's fifty cents preferred and a dollar required.
In public works, if a parks employee came and he said, I want to get my CDL. I would, I would support that because they're in public works. I could use them potentially on any first storm then, but they won't.
No, no, they're still getting those. Yeah.
Danielle's not getting money for her CDL.
Just about any way. Any way they can improve themselves improves the city. So I just would let, have a look at that.
Then in January, we, when survey information became available, we began, we began surveying our positions. Um, and I just want to remind you of the resources that we used. We first used the League Arizona Cities and Town Salary and Benefit Survey. We use local entities such as the town of Thatcher in Graham County. And then we use the GIMES three point O. It's a second to the league. Survey that municipalities, uh, use when the positions aren't listed on the survey. Next, I'd like to remind you of the cities and towns we compared ourselves to, which were Thatcher, Globe, Page, Wickenberg, Winslow, Shallow. Cottonwood, Catburne, Chino Valley and the Graham County. And when there were no positions listed within the cities and towns chosen, we HR branched out to additional cities and towns. Trying to keep in mind the size of operation. So we could gather enough data. As far as the calculation procedures in phase three, uh, which is the actual market review itself. The pay range information found from each city and town was averaged out to create a new range for all city of separate positions. So in this example, we have our administrative assistant. Position. On the left-hand side of that chart, it lists the city and town. We have the population for reference there and then we simply plugged in the range minimum and range maximum. From each city and town for that position. Now at the bottom there, you simply average out those data points. So in this example, the average range for this should be thirty-seven thousand to fifty-four thousand. Our city of Safford current range is thirty-four to fifty-two. So that tells me the range needs to go up between four and six percent. Any questions on, on that process? Once HR knew the survey average range, HR chose the closest range on our paid table. As you can see in this example, the, the range was a range four, which is thirty-seven thousand to fifty-five thousand. Um. So once a new pay range was established, each employee was placed on the new range for their position in correlation with their years of experience using a twenty-year spread. This is the method by which compression is fixed. And I just want to make a note, if the employee's wage was higher than what the survey shows, we didn't decrease anybody's wages. Um, so for, as an example, if somebody's been an administrative assistant for six years. They fall on pay range four based on the average range with survey. And then they fall on step seven based on six years of experience and this person's wage would be forty-two thousand. Any questions on this method? Once a new annual rate was established for city employees, a calculation of the new annual wages minus the current annual wages was calculated. Resulting in an approximate cost of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. This figure covers all funds and does not include EREs. The impact on the EREs will be discussed for the budget. So our current annual wage spend is nine point one million dollars. New annual wage spend is ten million dollars for the difference of the nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. Broken down by fund, the general fund is three hundred and forty-three thousand. First streets is thirty, approximately thirty-eight thousand, internal services, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Enterprise, four hundred and one for the grand total of the nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. Some observations that were made during this process were the following. There were twenty-nine position titles whose pay range increased. And two of those were department head position titles. There are eighteen position titles whose pay range decreased, two of those once again being department head titles. And there were forty-four position titles whose pay range stayed the same. And once again, I just want to reiterate that if somebody's pay range weighed down. Pay range went down, we didn't decrease anybody's wages. There are approximately a hundred and ten employee increases that need to be processed. And the cost is a mixture of the pay range changes in comparison to the market, but also employees being adjusted on their range based on their years of experience. So this is decreasing compression amongst employees within the same position and range. Any questions so far? The recommendation is to fix compression and rate wage rates all at once with a total cost of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand within the ongoing revenue stream. If we do this, the goals that will be achieved are compression will be corrected amongst the employees. Employee increased wages will immediately help with recruitment and retention. And the city can also begin implementing other parts of the compensation plan sooner rather than later. That are also important for recruitment and retention. Any thoughts or direction?
John, I have one. Um, are we going to have to increase our utilities if we do this?
We, in the short run, no. Um, over time, we still have to look at rate studies and the increases that are part of this will end up being part of those rates for sure. Uh, but in the short run, I think we're okay. Uh, but yeah, at some point it's going to have an impact, but I think in the case of utilities, the bigger impact on your rates will be your capital projects, not your personnel. And I, and again, before we move on, um. This again is one of these, that's kind of why I let off tonight. This is a critical decision, right? As we talked about with police and the, and the fact that, you know, one of the things was to kind of create a situation that remained. Competitive for them so that we could rec- recruit police officers. While it looks like, and Matthew's going to talk and break this down a little bit more, while it looks like a big number all in. Uh, and it is, um, you're talking about an eighty million dollar budget. And this is not a salary increase. This is us fixing the ranges and where people sit within those ranges. So again, I, you know, if we say, well, we want to do half, well, you're not giving a five percent raise and so you're going to do two and a half percent. You're literally saying that I could have two employees who will set in a different place on that range. So. A lot of e- employees will be impacted differently. So doing half is. A very difficult thing to do. This is a fixed design. To fix the compression that's happened over many years because of the inconsistent nature of the raises. And that would put us in a position moving forward to then go to a more typical Colomere type system. And it also is one that as Rob has pointed out, you've got two point five million dollars of ongoing revenue. With which to pay for, and that was in the general fund, right? So and you'll see more of these numbers coming up. So. The ability to implement this fix is well within your ability to pay. And you have an organizational imperative that says. If I want to have employees that are good employees and retain employees, because we had a lot of discussions about people leaving. Right? This is a great way to keep employees employed and again. Be competitive in a market where in several occasions, we've had employees where we. And the first thing is go on to the next community because we basically got them ready and someone else instantly paid them more. So again, this is not just a raise, it's decompression, if you will, of the salary ranges. And it really should be implemented as a unit and it is well within your ability to pay as your. Point five million dollars to.
Ranges, so. To answer your question, it doesn't necessarily. Cause we weren't on a performance basis.
They said we haven't been getting performance.
So we're going to, we're going to fix compression and then what you're saying.
So there's nobody in the system that's been getting merit raises or. Not, maybe not by that word, but if, if, if their supervisor has gone and got them. An extra perk and then now we're going to take it away. Is that, I just want to make sure that's not happening.
I don't think they, that increase, as far as my knowledge, there, there wasn't ever a performance-based system in the past. So everybody was getting increases either way. So like for instance, how we did a three percent last year, everybody just got it. So this is, this is going to clean everybody's years of experience up, fix the compression and then moving forward. You know, it'll be based on.
And, and placement on the scale is, won't include the differentials. So you're comparing base to base.
It's use years of service.
Yeah.
For me, this is the most important thing that we, we've had before us. And I think it's the most impactful thing. That we have an opportunity to do and, and I don't. The, the way to be successful with it is to, uh. Get everybody to a starting point where they need to be. Otherwise, the whole rest of the Colomere and the, uh, we're just behind. Right off the bat and then we're trying to fix it again and we did that with, um. PSPRS and then the next year, why didn't we do this last year? We did it with, um, insurance premiums. Why didn't we do this last year? We almost did it with parks. We almost wound up with, why didn't we do this last year? Barely. Um, I just think it's a pattern that's, um. That's a little bit dangerous that we need to kind of break out or. Um, I, I love it.
I agree, that's, that's a good way to look at it. As long as we're having good years. There's going to be a time when we can't pull all this together.
Well, and there'll be years, future councils may not, there may not be a cola. Uh, it may, it may just not happen, but to, to get us where we need to be.
Well, I agree.
Yeah, it's.
Well then, do you also agree that with what we've seen financially? And we're not raising taxes and we're not doing that. We do it all in and not half.
Oh, absolutely.
See how you can do half.
It would be extraordinarily difficult.
It'd be wrong next year.
Yeah, it would be. And again, so. The, the critical aspect of this is that there is an organizational deal that was created over a period of time because we didn't address these issues. It just so happens that right now, it's almost like a one-time expenditure, right? So it just so happens that right now, you've got enough ongoing revenue to pay for this bill this year or twenty-four next year. Without raising taxes and fix the issue that you have, which puts you in a position going forward to do Colomere. Which you can adjust. So. So again, the idea of the cola gives you that flexibility. So if you're in a high inflationary market, you're probably generating additional revenue because. That can of soda, right, is a higher price, even though the rate's the same, you're generating more revenue, they offset each other. If you find yourself in a low inflationary market, revenues aren't coming in as much, you're going to adjust that cola accordingly, right, to, to, to balance that out. So the idea here is. It's not a raise, it's us taking the initiative to reset the employees where they belong based on their years of experience. In a range that the market has defined as appropriate. Which then resets everything so you can then move forward and, and stay current with a normal Colomere system.
We're cleaning up old mistakes so we can move ahead.
I think it's going to have to, have to happen again in ten years or something.
It shouldn't. You'll still do that market shift, but this one is, is significant because we haven't done it in a while. And so you had, you, you had different epochs, right? If you looked at compression. Employees that have been here a really long time that survived, if you will, the downturn. They were experiencing a lack of raises for a while. And so some of your longest-term employee salaries are lower. Because they went through that period where we weren't given raises. So now you're coming in on the front end. And the newer folks are given a little bit more money in order to be competitive. And so that's creating the compression. So if we. Use all three components, if you do the market analysis on a, a regular basis, you're going to make that adjustment. And then the Colomere is an internal piece that you do based on whatever year you're in and the ability to pay. So that market analysis should keep you from having a significant incident ten years from now. That's the whole point, right?
So moving on to the benefits portion of this presentation, I would like to do a quick overview of the HSA plan and a few things that need to happen. So the current intent of the city's separate employee, employer HSA contribution to match up to half of the max annual. That is set by the IRS. Last year, we increased the city's HSA contribution to meet this intent. Uh, every year the IRS increases the contribution limit in January by a few hundred dollars. So in order to follow the calendar year, the IRS uses, HR would like to establish a policy that aligns with the current practice. That states the city of Stafford will match up to half of the max annual allowable contribution. Meaning that as the IRS changes their limits, so will the city of Stafford. This will eliminate HR bringing the HSA increase during the city of Stafford budget cycle, which lags approximately six months behind the IRS changes. And the policy will also stop the city has for employer contributions as far as amounts. So this is the proposed policy. The city will match the employee's contribution up to half of the ma- maximum annual contribution that is set by the IRS, not including catch-up provisions over fifty-five years old. The employer contribution is calculated but by dividing half of the, of the max annual. Allowable contribution by twenty-four paychecks and is then contributed to the employee's HSA accounts up to that amount. Bi-weekly on the first and second paycheck of that month. So we're, it, within this policy, we're basically saying we're going to keep up with IRS changes and this is how we're going to contribute to the accounts. Um, you know, up to a certain amount per paycheck. Any questions on that policy?
In some organizations, you may not even know this, Danielle, does some, uh, upfront the entire amount?
Not usually. And so, um, the reason you want to set it. Per paycheck bi-weekly is so that, you know, somebody that's resigning. So that's why it's, I'm establishing the frequency of how much, how we're going to match.
How does that affect those of us who only get twelve paychecks?
You're talking about fire?
So it'd be at their frequency. But I guess I would need to put a disclaimer.
I'm just thinking it. Probably needs to be said that. Probably needs to be said that, not everybody gets paid that way.
Yeah, there's gonna be a disclaimer as far as that. So, really what the problem is, is that we're bringing HSA increase during the budget cycle, and then it's not affected until July, when the IRS has already increased it way back in January, so we're lagging behind by not just having like a policy saying we're gonna do this. And so then you'll see employees trying to increase their HSA contributions, and we're not matching up to half because we haven't taken it through the budget cycle yet. So that's a concern, that's why I'm bringing it this round.
I also like to explore the the catch-up provision as a probably not this year, but look at it as a retention tool.
Are you, do you mean like matching the?
Yeah, matching that.
So I believe it came down to, um, like, how our system has to, how we have to pay code it out. And there may be limits in the system, as far as that's concerned, Rob, maybe you have more input as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, we could look into that, there are some limitations within the current system, because we're basically setting a specific code that says the city shall pay up to half of this value. Now, that's not gonna be half, everyone will have a segment of those employees that would be different, because they would have another thousand dollars of headroom. Um, just in my experience in other jurisdictions, uh, that catch-up provision is always on the employee um, from, from that perspective. And another reason why other jurisdictions or companies don't pay upfront is because IRS rules don't allow you to take that back.
Right.
So if we're paid upfront, if somebody were to leave, you can't, you can't pull it back, legally. Uh, so it's usually split, um, across whatever timeframe, whether it's at the first of the month, if, or you get paid once a month, you get, you know, at the first and second, that's how it's distributed. But not insurmountable, if that's where the council wanted to go, but we were trying to find, you know, kind of a set it and forget it Ronco moment here, if you can, right? Okay, can we set this value at X? Uh, so that way whoever signs up for that family plan or whoever signs up for that high deductible, uh, single plan, uh, we know what that value is and moving on.
I just have a friend, it works, they did that for him, to retain him, instead of him going to F and F, he stayed with Vecto because they, they sent him an extra five hundred bucks, and that's pretty, that brings sad, but.
Again, I, I think that's something to explore, if that, if that's needed, and perhaps that would be a, um, negotiated item uh, for the city manager on retention, that could be one of those tools in the toolbox, if, as needed.
And there's only twenty-four, uh, not twenty-six that they contribute?
So if someone's retiring, how do we figure out, like, what they can contribute? Like, if six months?
So they, as far as what they can contribute, they can make changes however they would like as far as their contributions, but what this policy does is says we're gonna only do up to this amount on purpose so that we're not giving more or less to one person that work, has worked half the year versus a full year, so.
Do you have to go off of how many months they're paid, or how many checks?
Yeah, so we're gonna base it on checks, we know we're only going up to half of the max that the IRS has set, and so that limits us to a specific amount when it's written like this. So, moving on to the actual increase that did occur in January, um, so it did change for two thousand twenty-three, so in two thousand twenty-two, the single plan was thirty-six fifty, family plan seventy-three hundred. Now it is thirty-eight fifty and seventy-seven fifty. So we would like to, you know, increase as far as our contribution based on what happened in January. And then also assuming the IRS increases the contribution amount by a few hundred dollars each year, the request is to continue to increase the city of Stafford employer contribution to equate through those changes, and this will result in a change approximately thirteen thousand per year. So if we're keeping up with that, that's our estimate as far as how much more we're gonna spend each year if we keep doing that.
The plan is to put it in the budget and then bring it to us in January, based on room.
Well, my intent was just to, I mean, if that's what we want to do moving forward, was to have a policy saying we're gonna match half. And if I have that policy in place, my intent was not to bring it through the budget cycle because it lags behind by six months.
Put the money in the budget and then, but in January, we vote off.
Right.
Spend any of it.
I guess we'd be doing that whole year in advance if we do it, do that, that way.
Thing we're saying is when you bump it in January, we come back with a bump.
Any other thought?
Not a good idea.
What if someone were to do that, but like, wasn't planning on leaving, but they do leave and have their, do they, will their members be brought back?
No, they just can choose to, knowing that they're not gonna get a full year's worth of match, because they only have, you know, they, they're working six months, so they're gonna get twelve paychecks from us, they know they're not gonna get the full match from us, so they can increase their own contributions for.
So their ministry drops.
Their match is always gonna be max. They sign the policy.
Yeah, and so.
It's always gonna be max of what, the twenty-four divided by how much it is. So, as long, if, say it's three hundred, if they contribute five hundred, the city's only gonna match up to three hundred. So they can contribute X, the city's always gonna match, it's half allowable. Based on that policy.
They're only gonna match it if the employee puts that much in.
Correct.
Right.
Up to that.
And, and you can't, you can't put in more than that, so.
The employee can put, they can put in, but this.
Take it back out. They can't leave it in there.
Right, if I can, Vice Mayor, so it's still up to the employee to ensure that they're not going over the IRS, allowed maximum contribution for both employer and employee. You know, the city will work with the employees if that situation happens, to try to correct it before the end of the calendar year, which is the trigger, uh, for the IRS, whether we need to uh, work with our HSA administrator, move the monies, so that way it gets pushed into the next calendar year, and then their dollar value gets changed, that's, that's why we are looking to kind of fix the number based on a, a calculation, we will always fifty percent of the IRS maximum, not including catch-up provision, divided by twenty-four. That way it's easy for the employee then to determine how much I put in, knowing this is always gonna be the city's max, as long as putting in that value, I will always get that value from the city. They can always put in more um, of their contribution. You know, I mean, if, if they've over contributed, they can stop it.
Okay, so next, Matthew's gonna go into the insurance premium changes and how that's budgeted.
Good evening. I'm gonna go over the insurance premiums, um, I'm just gonna briefly do a recap of what was kind of done over the past year, kind of like Danielle did with the compensation plan. So the city of Stafford currently has eight different health insurance options for employees to choose from. The first four, the high deductible, and then the option is listed as well, and then the next four, the EPO plan. And then those are the per month expenses. The second column being the employee expense per month, and then the third column being employer, so total costs is. Similarly, there's the dental plan as well, we only have four options for employees to elect on that one. They're listed there. And then vision. Same deal, dental, there's only four options, and then they're listed as well. So that was twenty-three, if we roll forward now to the budget for this year and twenty-four, we're gonna see a four and a half percent increase to health insurance premiums. And this current, or this upcoming budget. Vision and dental will not change, though, those are gonna remain what they were on the previous two slides. Your health insurance, though, will go up if you go to the next one to these numbers. And that is with the four and a half percent increase, and those numbers are what we reflected in the budget worksheets that you had seen in the previous two work sessions. So all these, all the costs associated with that five and a half percent increase that Raggett has met and decided on in February were reflected in those different worksheets.
Just, just before I forget, on the tenth,
Yes.
we need to make a decision because we have to get those numbers to Raggett on the health insurance again, so just, I just wanted to say tonight.
It's the we need direction tonight.
Really?
Yes, we need direction by.
Right, strike that, we need direction tonight.
So similar to last year, I don't know if you guys recall, we had to kind of make a decision on what we wanted to change our split to, add the budget, yeah, or at least get direction on what we were going to do. So it's the same scenario here, we have to have, have direction tonight and what split we want to take.
So they start based on what we decide to do for the player subsidy, they start building the system, which has to be built by me first.
So we're gonna look at, in twenty-three, council decided to change the premium split for elections that were on a seventy-thirty split, so that's your all, all the other plans besides your employee um, to an eighty-five fifteen split, cutting employee monthly premiums in half. Employee elections remained at the ninety-ten split. Right now, there are currently one hundred and eighty-nine employees eligible to receive insurance coverage that work for the city of Stafford. Hundred and thirty-eight employees are enrolled in health coverage, fifty-two of those are employee-only. Sixty-three employees are on the high deductible health plan and seventy-five are on the EPO plan. Hundred and forty employees are enrolled in dental coverage, forty-seven are employee-only. Hundred and thirty-seven employees enrolled in vision coverage, forty-seven are employee. Additional split options are gonna be listed with total costs in the following tables, as well as the total costs with the FY twenty-four premium increase. So if we look at the table on the left, that is what is currently in our budget, that is reflected on with the four and a half percent increase. The second column shows what it was last year with our premium breakout. The second column, or the third column is what is our new breakout for what each fund has to pay for that four and a half percent increase. And this is just employee, or employer costs, sorry, this does not include employee costs. So, all in all, there will be an eighty-five thousand dollar bump across all funds with that four and a half percent increase. Now, the next couple tables are gonna have different, the different splits that we could go to if council chose to. The column on the, or the table on the right is the ninety-ten split, so this is if we were to take all the plans to ninety-ten. Again, similar to the table on the left, but the number would be a hundred and eighty thousand, so you're looking at about a hundred thousand dollar increase if you took it to ninety-ten. Anybody have any questions so far? If we continue on to the next one, this has the ninety-five-five, the hundred-zero. I will point out, though, when you go to ninety-five-five, that now the employee-only plans are going to bump up with all the other dependent care plans. So that's why the increase is more substantial than if you were to go from our four and a half percent increase to all the other plans in ninety-ten. And then if you were to go all the way, uh, employer-paid insurance, it would be four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Any questions? So file recommendations and requests, all recommendations and requests are listed below. First, you have the market review. Um, the next column is gonna be the market review changes with your EREs, you have the fourth column is your benefits and your HSA, and then the totals at the end. So, the benefits and HSA in this table is just gonna be, here's that four and a half percent with the HSA. So as you see, the number that was given by Danielle earlier in this presentation, the market review change was nine hundred and eighty-one thousand four seventy-seven, I think is what she said, so I'm a dollar off. But with ERV, which are employee required expenses, so with those changes, the, your workman's comp, um, or your workers' comp, your other, your FICA, your retirement are all increased as well, and so because of that, the one point two million is, is more like what it would be across all funds. Now, if you throw in the four and a half percent increase and then the thirteen thousand for the HSA, that's the ninety-eight thousand four fifty-nine. So in total, it would be one point three million across all funds for the market review, the EREs, the benefits and the HSA. Now, if we go to the next slide, this is if we went to ninety-ten for all insurance plans, the market review wouldn't change, your market review with EREs would remain the same, but your benefit, your HSA total would increase, and that would bring it to one point four, so if council decided to go to ninety-ten for all insurance plans, it'd also do the market review salary survey with your EREs, it'd be one point four across all funds. And if you look at that top line, the general fund, it would be five hundred thousand in the general fund. Continue. Um, these are all the same, except with the ninety-five-five, so your total will be one-five-fifteen. And then the last one is uh, all-in, a hundred percent employer-covered, uh, health insurance. Or all insurance. So finally, on this last slide, I've shown with the no premium teams remaining at an eighty-five fifteen for all the pending care plans, uh, ninety-ten, or, yeah, ninety-ten for employer only. I show if all plans went to ninety-ten, all the plans went to ninety-five-five, and then a hundred zero. And I'll just leave it there, if you guys have any questions. And again, so since there needs to be direction tonight for Raggett.
And, and is there a recommendation from Steph on this, and Matthew? You know me, you know what I'm gonna say.
Um.
But, well, I won't put you on the spot, I'll just say for, for three hundred thousand more, um, I'd love to. Would I? And, and as a employer, employee, I'm sorry, of a similar type of organization, nothing would attract and retain me. This would attract and retain me more than even the salary.
You're talking about the hundred?
Yeah.
I gotta, I.
I just need a big attract and retain feature, and then, and, and we can do it, I don't wanna I don't wanna do the spend crazy one, but.
I, I, I do it, but I can see that as far as.
So the reason, so we have two center health, right, we have a medium.
Right.
So if we go back to the left of those slides, one of the reasons, or just something that I wanna point out. If you look at so if you look at the cost, the total cost based on if you look at a high deductible health plan, it costs, um, for a family plan, it costs around six hundred dollars less for the city to pay. Now, if the employer's paying all those insurance costs, then what is deterring the employee from not just picking EPO?
Correct.
Um, it, so, I mean, that would be kind of one of my concerns, because everybody jumped in that and then with every employee who's on a high deductible not jumping to that, it would be a six hundred dollar increase to our budget as well.
Correct.
And so that would be my only concern, is if we did do a hundred, what's keeping the high deductible, I mean, they have that HSA, that's great, right?
Right.
You know, things like that, but just some, some things to consider.
Right. That, that makes sense.
Because they have to have a high high deductible to qualify for HSA.
Correct, you cannot get an HSA on EPO.
Well, we definitely need some direction here, though.
I
clearly we, well, by tonight, we, we got it.
And, and I just wanted to say, I don't wanna make a decision tonight, number one, it's a work session. And number two, the mayor's not here, and I would really like his input on this, so I'm hoping that if we're doing this, I think we can do it on the tenth, and bring the call Raggett, I I would like to have him present, I know insurance was a big issue for him, and I would prefer to wait and let him be in the room. They'll just have to adjust, but
Right.
and, and if we're gonna make a decision, we make it in a meeting, not in a work session, and I would like the mayor to participate in that discussion, so we don't have to make a decision tonight, you can provide direction, and we can still provide the options if we wanna narrow, and that's fine, but we don't have to make a decision.
That's a good point. We, we could never say how they feel about it.
Yes, yes.
You know where the mayor.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna have him, and I'm not, I don't wanna make a decision tonight, I mean, we can bring you a couple of options, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna send, I don't wanna send Raggett to answer tomorrow morning when I have But I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna send, I don't wanna send Raggett an answer tomorrow morning when I haven't talked with the mayor yet, so. So is that okay? I mean, we can still get direction, but I would rather wait to make a decision. I don't wanna send anything officially to the insurer until we get everybody in.
You're gonna be Justin Bragg, you know that.
Yes, and we'll let him know, but I think that it's important, I need careful in discussion. And so I guess, from my perspective, ninety-ten works across the board, I think it's important that people have skin in the game on the insurance. I think that the, I, I'm much more concerned with us riding the ship as far as salaries go. And it, because of the mechanism that, that Matthew's alluding to also changes that dynamic. So I think ninety-ten is a good way to go, again, let's, let's have this discussion, uh, in a, in a room where we can make a decision. Um, but, I always feel personally like it's important that people have some money in it. So, and then it does have an impact the way the two, two, two plans will play out. Uh, so again, we can bring these back, I think we're, we're leaning toward Bradchand and Estelle to some degree. Let's wait and we'll make a decision as we make a choice on the tenth in terms of which one we pick with everybody in the room.
You say you like ninety-ten?
I do. Well, again, it's just, it's, it's somewhat of an arbitrary decision, but the idea is that, you know, individuals still have skin in the game. And based on the mechanism that, that Matthew was talking, in terms of which plan you pick, it will have potentially a significant impact at that point.
Great, we got a lot of money and we're gonna spend a lot of money. A lot of these things are, year after year, gonna be there, hopefully, hopefully implemented. Been broke before, so unconscious.
Anybody else have anything else? And we'll move on, no more comments, and we will move on to, um, item nine. Announcement, thank you.
The Graham County Elections Director did advise that Thursday, April sixth. There will be a visit from the Arizona State Secretary Adrian Fongus. And he'll be at the General Service Building from eight-thirty to ten-thirties, that's what the announcement was that I gave you, always along with your.
So it has been, so there's a back, they show on, just so we.
Yes.
Any requests for a future agenda? None? Okay, I can't say it.